So, um, let's call this meeting to order. And please ra- rise to salute the flag. I have a little flag here, so. Start. If we could all stay, um, stay on your feet. I'd just like to, um, at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence for those that we have lost recently to COVID-19 and for all the healthcare workers on the front lines of this fight. Thank you all. Okay, let's, um, Counselor, may I have the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to NJ SA ten colon four, the Open Public Meetings Act, and at the directive of Superior Court Judge Troncombe pursuant to matters OCNL eighteen seventy-nine fifteen OCNL eight twenty-two ninety-two, OCNL two seventy-one dash twenty VW. Notice of this special meeting issued pursuant to guidelines of the Division of Department of Community Affairs has been noticed and published in all appropriate locations.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
For Monday, April twentieth, twenty twenty, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan. Mr. Dolan?
He's on mute.
Okay, Dr. Campbell?
We lost her. We lost Dr. Campbell.
Okay, Mr. Riker? Mr. Nygro?
Here.
Mr. Justlikie?
Here.
Mr. Enzalock?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here, just a reminder to record.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Hudak? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Ricardi?
I'm here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
Okay, may I have a motion for the payment of voucher recording secretary for April sixth, twenty twenty, please?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Dolan?
Excuse me, that should really be April twentieth. I'm sorry, I messed up on that.
That's quite all right, April twentieth. Payment of voucher recording secretary for this evening, April twentieth. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Dolan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Dr. Campbell?
We lost Dr. Campbell.
Okay, Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. And then we have, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of March second, twenty twenty, our regular meeting unless someone has any changes or, um, in mind. Anyone?
No, no changes.
May I have a motion, please? Motion.
Motion to approve?
Need a second.
Sure.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yes.
Mr. Enzalock?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
What about me?
Who was that?
Joe Ricardi, yes.
Ricardi.
Um, you were absent at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Dang, she's on her toes.
Good job, Danielle.
Okay, um, now, we have to go into executive session to discuss some litigation that's currently taking place, um, regarding a lawsuit, and I am going to turn this over to Sean if he could please, um, give a brief explanation of why we're doing this, why we have to do this. Sean, you're on.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to making the request to motion to executive session as indicated, uh, within my Open Public Meetings Act recitation, this executive session is court ordered, it's court ordered pursuant to the, uh, three dockets that I articulated, um, this involves what is commonly known as the, uh, Jackson Park uh, North proceeding. Uh, public will hear in the, uh, motion for executive session that the board again has been court ordered to deliberate over its denial, and afterwards come out of executive session and report to, uh, in the public session, report its actions. Um, depending on what occurs, whatever determination the, the board makes, there'll be further explanation.
Okay.
So, so with that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if it's not premature, whereas the planning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, and whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides that an exec- executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. And whereas it is necessary for the planning board of the township of, of Jackson to discuss in session, not open to the public, uh, matters relating to, uh, what was previously articulated with the docket numbers pursuant to court order of Superior Court Judge Troncombe, the matters to be discussed involve, uh, current, uh, litigation. And we had asked therefore that, uh, through the chair, that a motion in second be made to go into executive session. I would then just respectfully add to that motion to, uh, ensure that the, those folks, uh, the board members invite and professionals invited to participate in executive session, leave this meeting and re-log in to the separate, uh, private executive session, uh, link.
Okay, thank you. Now, everyone realizes, um, at the bottom right of their screen, uh, in a moment, um, you're gonna have to click on the red leave meeting that's there. Um, and we're gonna be leaving this meeting and going into the executive session, and that has a password as well. Now Sean had sent this, um, email, uh, you all should have received this. So you may want to, um, have that email open and you'll also wanna have the other email over with the link that has, um, this meeting in it so that once we leave executive session and come back to the regular meeting, you'll have a link to click on.
Mr. Chairman.
I never got the link for the original one, for this meeting. I clocked, I had logged in via the Jackson website.
Um, if you go in through Jackson website, I believe you are going to be an attendee and not a panelist.
Yeah, that's what happened before.
Right, and I think, I think that's where the, um, the mix-up comes. Um, so, uh, who is?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I should notify the public as well that pursuant to the agenda, one, action may be taken when you, when the board comes out of the executive session, but there will be no action prior to seven thirty. That would be the earliest the board comes out of the, uh, executive session, and, and that's really, although that's not the norm, that's an accommodation due to this, the matter in which we're proceeding here, so that the public need not be concerned that the board comes out any early, but I see it's already six fifty-two. I doubt that would happen in any event.
Hmm, okay.
I had a, had a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The, um, the email for this meeting from Friday was supposed to have a, um, a password?
Yes, uh, the email that came from, uh, Mr. Gertner, um, I received mine on four seventeen Friday at four oh nine PM. And if you slide down in the email, you'll see that it was kind enough to highlight in yellow the link and the password.
I see it.
Does everyone have that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Also make sure that you have the other email that came from Dynamic Five Engineering, um, handy as well, so that when we're done with executive session, you can then click on the link, um, that's in that email that would then bring you back to this regular session. Okay, everybody?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to, uh, request a motion to, um, adjourn to executive session. So I need a motion.
So moved.
And I need a. Okay, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yes.
Mr. Justlikie? Mr. Wall?
Wall is.
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Here's, we lost Mr. Fleming.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yeah.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, gang, um, don't forget, click the, um, leave meeting on the bottom right of your screen now, and I will see you in a moment in our executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to give you hosting capabilities again.
Hi, Stephen, how are you?
Doing good.
Uh, the only thing that I would have liked is, um, in the executive session, if I had the ability to mute everyone else, so something to consider going forward.
Okay. I see your name is in here twice. Whoever does not have their video on, can you state your name so I can re-change it?
That's me, Joe Ricardi. Is my name in there?
No. R I C?
R I C C A R D I.
A R D I. Got it, thank you very much.
So there are eighty-five, uh, attendees?
Eighty, yes, I show eighty-three right now.
Eighty-three, okay.
It's been hovering around eighty, eighties.
Apparently, a lot of people are saying they're locked out and can't get into the video on Facebook.
They should be able to, because this can hold up to five hundred people. I have a phone number on here, two oh one, two one three, eight nine five six. Can I get your name so we can put it in?
Paul Nygro.
Thank you.
Testing. Thank you.
Running through the list now, just making sure we don't have someone that came in as an attendee that I need to move over.
Still missing a few?
Yes, maybe.
Missing quite a few. Is it possible they're in as attendees?
Yes, that's what I'm checking. I'm crossing off the people that are in right now and then going to the attendee list so I can try to find them.
Danielle Simonowitz is in as an attendee.
I see her on, as a panelist right now, too.
Denise Quono?
Denise Quono, Denise, Denise. Got her. Wrote the panelist, here she comes.
Marty Fleming?
Got it. There's Marty. Michelle Campbell in here?
Yeah, where's Michelle? Hey, Marty. So we're looking for Joe?
Timothy Dolan?
There you go, Joe.
Yeah, Tim Dolan's here on the phone. I haven't been able to get through on the, uh, I can see you guys, but I can't talk.
Okay, let me change your name. Andrew in?
Yeah, there's actually quite a few people saying they're having problems logging in from the Jackson website.
They should be using the, um, the link that they were sent via, uh, email.
No, I'm talking about public, not, not panelists.
I see.
Yeah, I just logged in on a separate machine in my office and saying the meeting ID is not valid.
Let me try as well. There's another machine right here. Stephen, is that? Is that true?
It, I have not seen anyone say anything, I, nor can I see that. Um, so I'm not sure how, if it's coming on through like a, something on your, on your Facebook page or something like that. I have not seen that.
Yeah, I, I have specific people on different Jackson website, uh, Facebook pages saying they can't get on.
Sean, how does this affect, um, what we're doing here?
Uh, I don't wanna, I wanna comment, it's really, i- it, it goes to some extent to the applicant's risk. Because the po- the, am I muted to the public right now?
No.
I would recommend muting yourself, Sean, and making a phone call if you want, need, need to speak offline.
This is Bob.
Bob, mute your, uh.
I got him. Hi, this is Andy. I was just on with Tim. I know he's trying to get in. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hello.
Thank you.
Dr. Denise?
It is, but I can see you guys, but I don't know, I don't like what I look like.
You're dark.
There you go.
Very. Okay, here I am.
There you are.
Much better, thank you.
Yeah, I got that same problem. I, uh, I can see all you folks, but I can't see me.
And look, my last name, all the letters are the same size.
Oh, boy, we better take a photo. Take a picture of that. We'll put it right up on the dais.
We just ran a couple of quick tests and we were able to get in through the website, um, and through the, the Jackson Township, uh, website to get out, into the meeting successfully. I'm gonna try one more time also.
Okay, everyone, we are back in, uh, from executive session. I'd like to, uh, get a motion to open our regular meeting for tonight, April twentieth, twenty twenty. Someone would make a motion?
So moved.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please. Do we not have Danielle?
Danielle, you're mute.
She's muted.
Danielle, are you there?
I think she's in as a, uh, an attendee.
Danielle?
Ms. Dolan? Yep. Dr. Campbell? Here. Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Nygro?
Here.
Mr. Justlikie?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi?
Here.
Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Yeah.
Tim Dolan is here, I just, uh, Tim Dolan is here, but I'm, my video isn't working, so I'm on phone.
And I'm here, too.
All right, thank you. Um, seeing the hour, uh, nine forty-one, um, we have one application that is, uh, on our agenda uh, this evening, that is block one zero four zero one, one seven eight oh two, lots five point oh four, five seven point oh one, that is Jackson Park South Section. Um, I do not see us, um, hearing that application this evening, only because of, um, the, um, the late hour, so, um, can I have a motion to move this to our May eighteenth meeting? And then we will pick a date, uh, at that time to, um, schedule that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I, uh, ask a question on that?
Certainly.
I apologize for, for interrupting.
No, that's quite all right. I, I was going to ask you for your comment, um, things have just, uh, because of tech- technical issues and everything, it has just taken longer, uh, in executive session than, uh, we had all expected, so.
Of no, I, I under- I understand. Um, so I, I guess my, again, this is Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicant, just, just for the record. Um, I just wanted to know procedurally, um, the remainder of the evening, I'm assuming that the board is gonna report back, um, as to what was, what occurred in executive session on part of the judge's order.
Yes.
Does, does the, does the board anticipate, and maybe you can't answer this question in a second, but does the board anticipate that that'll take a while? I know we, I had speak, spoken to counsel, to Mr. Gertner about the hour that we would go to, I think we talked about ten thirty. I guess my question to you is.
No, sir, no, sir, uh, you and I had this discussion, it was ten PM.
Ten PM, okay, I'm sorry, ten PM was in, okay, so, I guess you, what you're telling me now is that you're, you need about fifteen minutes or so to, to conclude what will happen in executive session, and then we're gonna, you're gonna carry to the next meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm sorry if I, if I misspoke about ten thirty.
Oh, that's okay. Do me a favor, Jason, is there a way that you could turn your?
Sorry, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, thank.
My camera doesn't fit on my, huh, for some reason doesn't hook onto my screen, so I'm trying to maneuver, is that a little better?
That's better.
Sorry, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, guys, um, so, this, uh, application, we're gonna have to carry to, um, uh, May eighteenth, our next, uh, meeting because of the governor's, uh, continued, uh, his decision to continue our lockdown until at least May fifteenth, uh, which means our first meeting in May will not be held, and, um, so this one will be on the, uh, we'll decide on the eighteenth when we're gonna hear this next. So can I get a motion to, um, move this to the eighteenth?
So moved. Second.
And roll call, please. I'm sorry, we can't hear.
Mr. Dolan?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Uh, Jeff, you're muted.
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay, now we have some um, housekeeping to do, we have a number of applications. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna consolidate, I'm gonna read off these applications, and I'm gonna consolidate these into one vote, uh, to try to save a little time instead of doing them individually. Um, so these are all gonna have to be carried to um, the meeting of the eighteenth, when we will then decide what dates they can be heard. So um, the first one is block two one seven oh two, two one eight oh one, lots thirty-two, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty-one, this is Solomon Zalti, the location is South Hope Chapel Road. The second one is block two two one two, lot five, two twenty Faraday LLC, and this is a major site plan proposing a nineteen thousand square foot flex space building. Uh, block seven three zero nine, lot eleven, uh, twenty fifty West County Line LLC, this is an amended um, preliminary and final minor site plan to construct a one thousand ninety-five square foot addition, uh, block two two zero one zero, lot six, Burke Holdings LLC.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Those are all resolutions, those three that you just read, those are resolutions.
Oh, my mistake.
Alright, no, that's alright, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Couldn't grab me on the first one.
I, well, I figured you were gonna do all three resolutions first and then do applications, sorry.
Okay, I wanted to get these resolutions out of the way, I'm sorry, the applications. Block two two zero one zero, lot six, Burke Holdings, Faraday Avenue, block two one two oh two, lots six point zero one and seven, Isle Nine Grocery Store, block forty-two oh one, lot three, Cedar Swamp Plaza LLC, block six five zero one, lot forty-two point oh three, SAF Store Land Company LLC, uh, block two zero one oh one, lot thirty, Sam's Road Division, uh, block one nine seven oh three, lot two, Khaled Shaw Yidden, that's on um, East Veterans Highway, and, lastly, block one zero four zero one, one, uh, that's the uh, Park South, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So I need a resolution to uh, move these all to the May eighteenth meeting, where we will then, I guess, have a better idea of where our schedule is. So can I get a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
To uh, May. Roll call please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Um, now also because of the uh, governor's um, order, um, that everything remain uh, in lockdown through May fifteenth, I'd like a motion to um, um, to do away with our planning board meeting that's scheduled for May fourth. We have a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. So Denise, these um, resolutions, we're going to carry them until the eighteenth as well?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, block two one seven oh two, two one eight oh one, lots thirty-two, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty-one, Solomon Zalti, block two two one one two, lot five, uh, two twenty Faraday LLC, and block seven three zero one, lot eleven, two zero five zero, West County Line LLC, those are going to be carried until our meeting of May eighteenth as well, can I get a motion please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Nygro?
Yeah.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Ricardi?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Mi- Mr. Chairman, before we move forward, uh, just a point of uh, question or clarification, is it at least the current intent of the board, uh, that at the eighteenth, presuming there can be a meeting, that the south application would um, proceed as it was listed tonight? Um, Mr. Tuvel, are you um, okay with that?
Uh, well, we're under court order, I think, to, to find up, to finish the um, the south application before the end of, of May, uh, right Sean, I think we have until May twenty-fifth or so?
Correct, so I would think that we would have to at least, in good faith, start that application, given the order.
Yeah, all I can say is we'll be prepared to um, to proceed that evening.
Okay.
Uh, pursuant to the court's order.
Okay, fair enough. Um, okay, now um, I guess the moment we've all been waiting for, uh, after the executive session, um, I have a statement here that I'd like to read um, regarding the um, Jackson Park North. And first of all, thank you ladies and gentlemen, again, for your patience and for participating in this extraordinary event during these extraordinary times. I will discuss with you the board's deliberations ordered by Judge Troncone as related to the application known as Jackson Park North. You are all no doubt aware of the predicament in which the board finds itself having denied the application for reasons previously set forth on the record. The applicant chose to sue the township and the board, claiming, as we understand, that the board's denial of the application was a violation of the township's settlement agreement to provide affordable housing within the township, an element of which was to be provided on the north side. It appears clear from the record that when this settlement was reached in twenty seventeen, the township and those who voted in favor of including this site simply did not appreciate the environmental conditions that would have, would have had to have been overcome in order to fulfill that housing obligation on this site. It is not for me nor this board to speculate why it remained. The fact is, the site did remain, and we are now in the position of having to deal with that fact. I can assure the public that the board explored and studied all options studying this matter fully. The board does not want to be in a position to expose the minis- the municipality to the potential of significant overdevelopment should the settlement agreement reach to protect and limit the number of affordable units to be required in the town by twenty twenty-five be overturned, nor does the board want to take the risk and completely lose its oversight role as developments that are in the settlement agreement come before it. We do not want to trust more bureaucrats or alleged professionals to tell us what is necessary to protect the township. We want to protect our oversight role and to do the best we can with that role. However, the board was obviously troubled with the environmental constraint we cry- required to be overcome at this site. We remain concerned but are stuck through no fault of our own in attempting to strike a balance. We recognize that the court order laid out a binary divi- uh, decision. Either continue with the denial and take the risk that the entire judgment of repose protecting the housing settlement is breached, and take the further risk that a special master is appointed to not only address this application, but all applications in the housing element, or approve the development with the vast majority, but not all of the agreed to reasonable condition, except perhaps the, the one of most important. So, to protect some level of autonomy for the board, as I just mentioned, it is important to note that perhaps the most important condition to provide the connector road for access to county roads for the years of dump trucks is not a condition provided for in the case management order. We debated and discussed, and there is no doubt we are torn. However, each of us volunteered for this position with the goal of doing our best to protect the township. We believe we've come up with a reasonable compromise. The definition of compromise is that no position is fully vindicated. So, as to the environmental conditions prevalent on the property, as will be further explained by our mun- municipal planner, who is also an engineer, we have been assured that from an engineering perspective, the conditions can be addressed. We fully recognize that those items, which will be addressed by Mr. Peters, do not address convenience nor quality of life, particularly during construction. He will articulate the board's reasons on insisting upon the connector road being utilized to bring the fill, and will also address the current conditions of the permits and must be adhered to to assure the fill is clean. Now, a- at, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our uh, planner, uh, Mr. Ernie Peters, and he will go on and um, try to further explain how this um, is going to be handled going forward. So again, thank you for your patience, and, Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure um, that everyone can hear me, so, Mr. Chairman, I assume you can hear me okay? And our IT host, is I believe he's helping record the hearing, I want to make sure he can hear me okay?
Yes, hear you loud and clear.
Yup.
Jason Tuvel, you can hear me fine as well?
Yes, I can hear you, Ernie, thank you.
Okay, um, if I go too fast, or I don't talk loud enough, someone just jump in please, I know I'm speaking to a lot of people, and I want to make sure that everyone can hear what I'm talking about. Um, as everyone knows, this application was originally denied. Um, and so many of the items that were discussed during the back and forth between the applicant, the board, and the public were not put down in writing as part of the denial, the reasons for the denial were listed, but the things that were agreed to, that would help, if the project were to move forward, that would help the project become constructable and fit as best it can on the site. That normal discussion by board members um, in consultation with the applicant, normally at the end of the hearing, did not occur, because the application was denied. Um, so I wanted to take this opportunity to discuss the items that were of importance to the board members, to the public, and to the applicant during the pendency of the public hearing. Um, these are in no particular order, because we started out with an order, we talked about them in executive session for a while, and I have a number of handwritten notes on top of them. So again, if anyone has any, if anyone gets lost, if I don't speak slowly enough, or if I don't speak loudly enough, please just jump in. Um, one of the things that had been discussed was um, the agreement with, between the applicant and the town to work with the towns' professionals during the construction phase of the project regarding the importation of soil to the site, and the need to develop some soil monitoring system consistent with the applicable laws during that construction period to ensure that clean fill is brought to the site. The next item that I have on my list, talked about the maintenance of the stormwater management facilities. And to the best of my recollection, the applicant had indicated that there would be a homeowners association, also, also referred to as an HOA, that would be perpetually responsible for the maintenance of all the stormwater management basins in accordance with the applicable statutes. That obligation includes, but is not limited to, recording of an obligation and an operations manual in the record title. It's part of the deed, it's in the homeowners association, it's known as a declaration, and it's normally in the master deed, so there's no misunderstanding as to who's responsible for the maintenance of the stormwater management basins, once they're constructed. There was a concern raised regarding the combination of these stacked townhome units into larger units, and there was some discussion on that, and there was a stipulation that none of these stacked townhomes would be combined with another unit into a larger unit, and that the HOA bylaws for the project will contain a prohibition against the combination of stacked townhome units into larger units. The next item that had to do with the homeowners association is something that's gonna sound a little technical, so again, if I, if I either confuse or put someone to sleep, please stop me. But we often in, in the engineering field, talk about it as a municipal protection paragraph. And what that does is, it budgets for the operation, maintenance, replacement of stormwater management basins, the recreation areas, the parking, and the private roads. And the, those budgets will be prepared by, reviewed by professional management and professional engineering groups. These budgets must be approved by the Department of Community Affairs, DCA, which oversees these types of projects, as part of the, the, the DCA's um, issuance of the applicant's sales registration. So prior to the developer being able to sell a unit, they would have to put forth a budget that shows how much it's going to cost each resident in the community to upkeep the common elements of the project. The applicant did agree at the meeting to share those budgets with the municipal attorney, and to assist the municipal attorney in the preparation of this protection paragraph for the municipality, that would be inserted in the homeowner association governing documents. Again, typically a declaration in the master deed, which will specify the town's rights to intervene on the project, to perform work and backcharge the homeowners association. For any costs associated with the town operating, maintaining, or replacing any of the HOA facilities, should the HOA not do so. any of the HOA facilities should the HOA not do so. During the traffic portion of the project, the hearing, as well as the planning portion of the meeting, there was a discussion in the townhome section of the project regarding a public right-of-way and on-street or off-street parking. And the applicant had agreed to change a portion of the original public right-of-way configuration in the townhome area to eliminate that public right-of-way, thus making it private and eliminating the township responsibility for those access aisles. The next item that was talked about had to do with the board's professional letters and agreements during the testimony. There were reports and evidence from my office as the board planner, from Mr. Cleese's office, Owen Little Associates as the board engineer, and from a number of other municipal groups. The applicant had agreed on the record to comply with any outstanding comments from the engineer and the planner's letters, and it included all promises and conditions that were agreed by the applicant during the testimony. It included all requests for design waivers. It required the submission of a developers' agreement between the developer and the municipality, which would need to be approved by our board attorney and the township. The last issue dealt with roadway improvements and bringing fill into the site, and I'd like to break those down into three items. If everyone remembers, the applicant offered to construct a connector road from the county highway to Perrineville Road, and then down Perrineville Road, they would improve the road to the job frontage. And from the connector road, and I'm sorry, from the connector road and the Perrineville Road intersection south towards the church and the fork in the road, that a portion of Perrineville Road south of the connector road would be terminated in a cul-de-sac. And the applicant agreed to certain timing conditions related to the construction of the cul-de-sac on Perrineville Road. From the connector road at Perrineville Road north towards the site and even past the site, there are a number of improvements that need to be constructed. The first two would be sanitary sewer and water main. And those two improvements would come from the south end of Perrineville Road, north past the connector road, along the site's frontage, past the site, up towards Reed Road and Great Adventure where they would connect to existing water and sewer systems. We're all aware of the condition of Perrineville Road from Reed Road all the way south to the church. In some areas, it's been developed. In some areas, it's not as new. The developer had discussed with the board, preparing plans for the board's review of a consistent width along the underdeveloped portion of Perrineville Road, along with improvements from the connector road north to the site. Now, these improvements would include, but not be limited to, road widening and drainage improvements, the installation of catch basins, storm sewer piping, and perhaps the elimination of existing ditches along the road. Because the application was denied, the board, the board's professionals, and the township engineer never got to the point of discussing these improvements or the timing of these improvements. The last issue had to do with the connector road. And the connector road is our health and safety issue. It had been testified that the connector road had been part of the settlement that brought forth the zoning applicable to this site. And during discussions with the developer, both by the board members and the public, it was determined that in order to provide as safe a condition as we could for the amounts of fill and truck traffic necessary to develop the site, that the connector road needed to be installed and utilized as the haul route to bring fill to the site. The town, as part of the zoning for this project and as part of our co-responsibilities, is required to help expedite the approval and construction of this road. It's on both the town and the developer to get this connector road constructed. At the time of the hearing, the applicant had not received approvals from the county. I think the town, through its professionals, or the board through its professionals, would take the opportunity to discuss with the county any holdups in putting in what we perceive to be a real safety issue related to the development of the site and the importation of fill necessary to construct the site. Given the scope of the items we've discussed, the lack of knowledge of whether or not the county is going to let them get this traffic light and connector road done quickly so that the town and the developer can live up to their obligations to provide safe access to the site, not knowing the status of the roadway improvements along Perrineville Road and how they're going to be constructed. Obviously, if someone comes in and puts in a sanitary sewer main and a water main in the road that's in fair to not so good shape, we're going to have problems getting people around that road. And there's going to be a need to have a plan and a schedule for the improvements of Perrineville Road. Not only as they relate to the importation of fill to the site, but but in order to bring in construction equipment and allow the road to continue to service the residents that are out there, at this point, we don't have a plan that says how this is going to be done. It would seem reasonable to me that if the board were going to act in the affirmative on the application, that they should only grant preliminary approval at this point. There are simply too many outside agency approvals and too many things that aren't set in stone as of the date of the last hearing. As of the date of the last hearing, we didn't know the status of their water and sewer final approvals. We didn't know the status, I believe, of their soil erosion sediment control plans. As of the date of the last hearing, they didn't have county approval to construct the connector road to safely bring fill into the site to develop the site. With all those unknowns, I think it would be reasonable if the town were to act in the affirmative to grant preliminary approval.
Okay, Ernie, thank you. For the reasons articulated by the board professional and in light of what I believe is the board's equal concerns not to be inundated with builder remedy lawsuits, we will therefore propose that the board makes a motion to reverse its previous denial and grant a preliminary approval to the applicant subject to reasonable conditions, and that among those commission conditions will remain the provisions of the connector road to be more fully set forth in a memorializing resolution to be prepared by our attorney. We will direct our attorney to take the extraordinary step of having that resolution ready by the Thursday before our next meeting so that its form may be viewed by the public prior to our meeting. I ask the public to recognize that as the memorialization, memorializing resolution is in essence a settlement document such that there is no public debate nor input into that determination. However, the board has and remains deeply concerned that the process ordered by the court inhibits the transparency of the that the board strives to achieve. And it is for that reason, we're asking our attorney to make certain that the resolution memorializing this settlement is available prior to our vote. So, with that being said, I, Mr. Tubal, I would appreciate it if you would turn your camera on. Being that this is your application, you should really have this on.
I apologize. The board was deliberating, so I didn't want to disturb that, that's all.
Understood. So, listen, I don't think any of us on this board takes kindly to the corner that this judge has put us in and the position that he has put us in. I think, as I mentioned before, when you're dealt lemons, you try to make lemonade, and that's what we're trying to do right now. So, our obligation is to move forward and work with the applicant to make sure that their development is in line with what Jackson needs going forward and in the future. So, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to reverse our previous denial. So, if someone would like to make a motion?
And grant the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, and grant the preliminary approval subject to the reasonable conditions, most of which were articulated by Mr. Peters, including but not limited to the imposition of the connector road as a condition as previously agreed to by the applicant.
Thank you. So, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Len, I think you're on mute.
Yes, I am, sorry. Yes, I'll second that.
Okay.
I understand the situation.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion, and we have a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dolan?
Reluctantly and unhappily, I vote yes.
Dr. Campbell?
In order to fulfill the court order and to allow our board to maintain control over the next at least decade or more, I reluctantly vote yes.
Mr. Reicher?
With the understanding that it's in the best interest to protect our residents in the long term and have an absolute say in the progress that goes forward with this, reluctantly, I vote yes.
Mr. Nigro?
Reluctantly, I vote yes.
Mr. Wall?
Reluctantly, I vote yes.
Mr. Fleming?
I agree with everybody else. I'm reluctant. Well, with the best interests of the township, I have to vote yes.
Mr. Party?
Yes.
Mr. Harry?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Reluctantly, I vote yes. Thank you. So, motion carried. I thank you all for participating in this first of a kind for us virtual meeting. Unfortunately, there have been a few glitches. I'm sorry that the residents have to attend this this way. Hopefully, on our next meeting will take place and we'll be able to hear residents' comments. I'm sure there will be many. Okay, with that, I think we're done for this evening. Anyone have anything to add? No? Okay. See, no one. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise their hand. Aye?
Aye.
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 All right, guys. Thank you all. This has been a tough evening. Began around six o'clock for most of us. It's now ten twenty-three. Thank you all for your dedication. I really appreciate it. You guys worked really hard on this application, and I appreciate all your efforts and the professionals as well. Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.